Hi, everyone. We're gonna get started in about two minutes. Two minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and want to address council, pre-registered with staff in the lobby, please indicate item I for matters that are germane to City Council. On our podium, we have a light system. It is three minutes. After setting your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure, participation regarding items on tonight's agenda, and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. Copies of this ordinance can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Reverend Jones with First Baptist Church East End will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of this council to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads. God of all grace, we thank you for all of our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you continually bless them, generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our city. We pray that you give the mayor, staff, leaders, and City Council wisdom so that they can solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Will you follow me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, I would like to take a moment for a presentation of recognition. All of City Council received notification after a situation on Sunday, and I would like to personally recognize the efforts of Master Firefighter Jason Edwards. Well, Fire Chief Rogers, Master Firefighter Jason Edwards, and his family, please join me at the podium. So this is a little awkward because we're not in City Hall, and so I'm just gonna do this on the fly, alright? So if those of you who don't know, I get a text. You guys think bad happens in the city. Everything. I know something bad happens in the city. I'm on a text thread with Fire Chiefs and Police Chiefs. So I knew when my phone started ringing, something was gonna happen. So I'm gonna read this, and then we'll go through it. So on the morning of August eleventh, twenty twenty-four, Jason had just put his boat in the water to go fishing, off-duty, correct? And was heading toward Jameson Bridge when he saw what appeared to be smoke under the bridge. As Jason approached, the smoke became darker. As he got closer, he noticed people that were hanging on the wooden guardrails underneath the bridge. Jason quickly verified as best as he could that everyone was accounted for, and he brought six people aboard his vessel with varying injuries. Jason radioed the U.S. Coast Guard to notify them of the situation. While units were en route, Jason called the fire department to advise that he had all six occupants and was heading back to the boat rent at Huntington where our Newport News Fire Department had already established a medical branch. A moment of fishing for Jason transformed into heroism. Faced with a boat engulfed in flames and lives in peril, this man did not hesitate. His actions under pressure ensured the safety of six individuals, exemplifying the very courage and self-awareness that define our community spirit. Jason, we are proud to have you as part of our community and the Newport News Fire Department. We thank you for your actions on Sunday as they very likely changed the outcome of six people on this earth. Thank you so much. I can't think of a better way to start a council meeting. I know we've been gone for six weeks, so yeah, don't worry. I know you guys are gonna head out. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the first responders who continue to stand the watch. We really do appreciate you in the city. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see y'all again.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we will start the business portion of the meeting. Page six, item E one is a request adopting ordinance number seven-nine-eight-five-TAC-two-four to adopt the budget appropriate funds to operate the City Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Move and second it. End discussion. Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Page eleven. Item E two is a request adopting ordinance authorizing the city to contract a debt and issue general obligation, general improvement bonds in the amount of one hundred and twelve million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to finance this project. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item E three is a request adopting ordinance authorizing stormwater management text amendment, S M R-TAC-two-zero-two-four, TAC-zero-zero-zero-one, amending and reordaining city code, chapter thirty-seven point one, to be in compliance with new state regs. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item E four is a request adopting ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform, TAC-two-zero-two-four, TAC-zero-zero-zero-two, to Louisville Center Associates and Latasha Benier to allow for the operation of the banquet hall located at six-three-nine Pilot House Drive, Zone C one, retail commercial. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Move and second it. End discussion. Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move adoption. Second.
We're on a roll tonight. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item E five is a request adopting ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform, TAC-two-zero-two-four, TAC-zero-zero-zero-three to the Moyle Group, Inc., and Green Clean Auto Wash to allow for the operation of the car wash facility located at one-four-two-six-zero, Work Boulevard, Zone C one, retail commercial. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Two for questions only. Mr. Greg Schmidt and Tyler Rosa.
Copy all. Are there any questions? Okay. Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item E six is a request adopting ordinance authorizing vacation of a water line easement located at one-zero-one City Farm Road, Newport News, and authorizing the city manager to take further actions that shall be necessary to complete the transaction. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Move down, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Item E seven is a request adopting ordinance authorizing directing the city manager to take action to sell five city-owned vacant lots and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds, necessary to effectuate the conveyances. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Move down, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items: Minutes of the work session of July second, twenty twenty-four; minutes of the regular meeting of July second, twenty twenty-four; resolution changing the location of the regular City Council meeting of September tenth, twenty twenty-four, to the Midtown Community Center located at five-seven-zero McLaurin Drive, and canceling the regular City Council meeting November twelfth, twenty twenty-four; an ordinance saying the number of days sufficient for completion of the September first, twenty twenty-three, through July first, twenty twenty-four; terms of service of the Board of Review of Real Estate Assessments; and finally, a resolution in memoriam for John Wilder McMillan, Jr. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items F one through F five, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Move down, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Other City Council actions. Next on our agenda, item G one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G one is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement between the City of Newport News and the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, otherwise known as Amtrak, permitting Amtrak's use of city-owned land and facilities. It sets terms for conveyance of property and improvements to Amtrak and includes a reservation clause, excuse me, includes a reversion clause if Amtrak ceases passenger rail operations. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Item G two, Mr. Manager.
Item G two is a request to approve a resolution authorizing a donation to the Greater Peninsula Cares Foundation, Inc. to assist with initial development and administrative costs necessary to establish a business loan fund to support peninsula businesses. One of the foundation's initiatives is to establish, develop, and deploy a self-sustaining business loan fund and bring a community development financial institution, otherwise known as a C D F I, program to the area to assist local, under-resourced entrepreneurs, grow employment, and revitalize the community. City Council is asked to approve a two-hundred-thousand-dollar donation and authorize a grant agreement with Greater Peninsula Cares for the C D I F, for the C D I F, for the C D F I startup. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Move down, seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I am very happy to see this. I'm hoping that it will work for what I would like, since we are investing in it as Hampton has done. I would like a quarterly report on their progress and how things, how this money is being spent, and also on how many businesses they've actually started. If we could have a quarterly report on that, or at least, at least quarterly.
Concur. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Item G three, Mr. Manager.
Item G three is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate all agreements by and between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Resources Authority, administrator of the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund for the Stony Run Drainage Projects. Eleven projects, including storm sewers, ditches, and basins, have been proposed to address the flooding in the Colony Pines and Windsor Great Park neighborhoods within the Stony Run watershed. The grant of four million, two-hundred-seventy-two-thousand, three-hundred dollars will be supplemented by four-hundred-seventy-four-thousand, seven-hundred dollars from the Capital Improvements Plan for matching funds. I recommend approval.
No speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Again, on this, I would like some sort of report to the City Council on the, how this is done and how, what the progress is.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, four.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item G four, Mr. Manager.
Item G four is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining city code, chapter twenty-six, motor vehicles and traffic, Article one. The changes affect Article one, section twenty-six dash seventeen, assessment of costs for towed vehicles, and section twenty-six dash one-seven-point-four, removal and storage of towed vehicles. The city's towing advisory board recently reviewed towing rates and fees for police-initiated and private-requested tows. Proposed amendments to chapter twenty-six of the city code aim to align fees with those of other localities and clarify notification and release procedures. I recommend approval in accordance with the recommendation of the towing advisory board.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to know what those fees are, how much is charged by other communities compared to ours.
I think that's a question for...
Chief, Chief Drews.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
We also have the chair of the tow advisory board as well, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Newport News is far ahead of other localities, which is a great positive thing. Virginia Beach in September of twenty twenty-three did increase their fees to two-hundred for the initial tow of private property vehicles and the storage fee to sixty dollars. What we're recommending by the towing advisory board is far less than that. Obviously, our demographics in our city is a little bit different than Virginia Beach. York County just now created their towing advisory board in order to regulate their pricing, and the City of Hampton had one, but it fell stagnant, and so they're recreating their towing advisory board. So Virginia Beach is the only person that in the last three years has asked for an increase to bring the fees up to the standard.
So what are our fees?
Our fees right now are one hundred and twenty dollars for the initial tow and thirty dollars a day storage.
Thank you.
So what is it being increased to, Anna? Is that what you were saying is going up to one-twenty and thirty dollars a day?
That's our current rate. What the towing advisory board was asking was that it's kind of, there's different areas in the code in which we're asking for, but for illegally parked vehicles or private property, it would be going from one-twenty to one-seventy-five, and then from thirty dollars a day storage to forty dollars a day. The storage does not start till after twenty-four hours, so they have a twenty-four-hour grace period before that fee even accrues. Two years ago, we were at City Council and we asked for an increase in storage for police-requested tows, and that was granted to forty. So really, all we're trying to do is align those fees for police-requested tows and the non-consensual, the illegally parked tows.
Thank you. Any further discussions from City Council?
Request for the floor.
Yep.
Chief, can, can, do you endorse this?
So, yeah, so I endorse the, the, the board that's set, that there's a police officer, fire department sits on that board, civilians, and the tow companies and removal. And what this does is it puts us more in line with the surrounding jurisdictions, so I guess I... Thank you both.
Hearing none. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury, four.
Vice Mayor Bethany, four.
Councilman Ely, against.
Councilman Harris, four.
Mayor Jones, four.
Councilman Long, four.
Councilwoman Vick, four. Motion carries, six-one.
Thank you. Item G five, Mr. Manager.
Item G five is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management regarding the city's hazardous materials response team. The update and renewal of the existing M O U is effective until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, and provides clear lines of authority and responsibility for each party. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion from City Council?
What, yes, I do. I have a question. Where, I don't know how to ask it. What do we currently, how do we currently build these people? I'd like to ask Chief Rogers to come forward, please. Oh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, how do we assess these? How do we, you know, collect these?
So the, the M O U is with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. The Newport News hazmat team is one of nine teams in the state that serve as a regional asset for the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. So they provide funds to the City of Newport News to be able to outfit the team with the proper equipment, and during responses will reimburse us for any type of expenses that we have on, on our response, anything outside of our area here in Newport News.
Outside of our area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there any further discussion from city council? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, item G six, Mr. Manager.
Item G six is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate all agreements by and between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Resources Authority as administrator of the Virginia Community Flood. The city received grant funding through the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund for the New Market Creek Watershed Study. This study will update the existing commuter model of the watershed, recommend solutions for flooding and drainage issues, and provide updated floodplain mapping to the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The total study cost is $580,000, with a $522,000 grant awarded, and $58,000 in matching city funds from the Capital Improvements Plan. Recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, item G seven, Mr. Manager.
Item G seven, the first of two items, is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a grant agreement by and between the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and the City of Newport News in appropriating funds for the Brick Church Road BMP Project Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Grant. The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality awarded a grant to Newport News Waterworks during fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $1,086,97. The grant funds provide support for a new regional stormwater, stormwater quality treatment pond in the Harwood's Mill Reservoir watershed, and I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, item G eight, Mr. Manager.
Item G eight is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,086,97 of fiscal year 2022 Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Stormwater Local Assistance Grant Funds for the Brick Church Road BMP Project. This item is the second of two actions supporting the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Stormwater Local Assistance, Assistance Grant Funds for the Brick Church Road BMP Project. Grant funds will be used to reimburse Newport News Waterworks for expenditures related to the construction of a stormwater treatment pond in the Harwood's Mill Reservoir watershed. I recommend approval.
See, we have no speakers, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, appropriations, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager, I believe we have eight items, over to you.
Item H one, the first appropriation, is the first of two items. It is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $4,500 of state grant revenue from the Virginia Commission for the Arts for allocation by the City of Newport News to the local performing and fine arts foundation. These grant funds will be utilized in conjunction with the $165,000 approved in cities, in the city's fiscal year 2025 operating budget for support for the performing arts to award individual grants to eligible performing and fine arts organizations. Item H two, the second appropriation. Item two of two is a request to approve a resolution approving specific grant awards to various local performing and fine arts organizations in accordance with recommendations from the Newport News Arts Commission Foundation. Applications for the FY 2025 award cycle were submitted in June 24. Sixteen organizations are recommended to receive general operating support, and twelve organizations are recommended to receive project support. The total available funding for FY 2025 is $169,500. H three, the third appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $40,000 from the Virginia Marine Resources Commission Abandoned or Derelict Vessel Grant Program for removal and disposal of abandoned or derelict vessels moored at Leeward Municipal Marina. H four, the fourth appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $75,000 in federal grant funds to purchase security camera platform software for the Newport News Police Department, and audiovisual equipment for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Item H five, the fifth appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $180,000 of Operation Ceasefire Program Grant Funds from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for equipment and personnel over time. Item H six, the sixth appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution accepting and appropriating $684,280 from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority and the City of Hampton for funding cooperative projects approved by the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. Item H seven, the seventh appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution accepting and appropriating $1,760,896 of direct distributions from opioid settlements, opioid abatement authority individual distributions, and opioid abatement authority gold standard incentives received through fiscal year 2025. Item H eight, the final appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,344,112 and 25 cents from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality American Rescue Plan Act Wastewater Fund Grant for the Sewer Collection System, James River Forest Main, and Septic Conversion Project, and the Septic Local Partner Program, Septic to Sewer Connection Program. I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
Thank you, I know there's a lot of appropriations, are there any speakers for items H one through H eight?
No, sir.
Motion to approve item H one through H eight, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Move and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have questions. Sorry.
Let's do it.
All right, I want to know about the arts because...
Can you list it by the, by the appropriation number?
Let me see if I can find...
I believe it's H two.
H two.
Just for the record. H one and H two.
All right, H one and H two, I want, in the reports this year, the Arts Foundation had not spent any of the money that we had allocated them from the city. So I would like a report about where this money is coming from, is it part of the city money, or is it money they have raised or grants that they have gotten? So I would like a report on that one.
I think we have people who can speak to it.
All right, good, okay.
I think they're here, let's do it.
Wonderful.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The funding that the Newport News Arts Commission uses for the grants is the $4,500 Community Challenge Grant from the Virginia Commission for the Arts, along with the $165,000 that is allocated through the Community Support Agency Grant, and has been approved previously by the city.
Was there no city money there, or?
The $165,000.
Is, and you have allocated that since then, since the report from last year?
Oh, you referring to FY 24 monies?
What of the monies was left, were left over, or that you hold out, had not spent?
There are no funds that have not been spent.
Okay.
Correct, the FY 24 recommendations, checks were cut, and, and the organizations received the funding that was recommended during that presentation for FY 24.
They have been spent now?
Yes.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear, because you had all that money left and hadn't spent any of it, at least the way it looked on the report when I saw it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from items H one through H eight? If not, Mr. Manager, I have one for H seven, can you speak to the opioid settlement funding and how we're going to utilize that?
Yes, I'd like for Virginia to come forward from the Finance Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of council, mayor, vice mayor. So I can speak to a little bit about what we're going to do with our opioid distributions. I also have the Community Service Board here to talk about some of their projects. So we're receiving several different buckets of opioid funds, which you can see here, direct distributions, individual distributions, gold standard incentive, as well as we received an approval for cooperative funding in partnership with the City of Hampton to support two projects for the Community Service Board. So we're looking to support a project within our jail to expand medication-assisted treatment within the jail, as well as two projects for the Community Service Board, one is a peer recovery-oriented system of care, as well as a mobile medication unit, a small allocation for the Commonwealth Attorney to support wraparound services for our mental health docket. I'm sorry, excuse me, as well as a small allocation, $100,000 of our direct and individual and gold standard will go to support those two CSB projects in partnership with Hampton.
Great, thank you.
What is the project with Hampton, again, say?
So through the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, we could receive additional cooperative opioid funds by partnering with Hampton on a project for a region. So with the City of Hampton, we've partnered with them to support our Community Service Board for two projects. So I will turn it over to Daphne and Tony to go into more detail about the two projects that they're looking to do.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, I'm Daphne Cunningham, I'm the Deputy Executive Director of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, and I have with me Toni Crisp, who is our Director of Addiction and Recovery Treatment Services. And so we're partnering with the city in order to develop a program, actually two programs as Virginia talked about, or three. One of them is going to be based on, in the jails, helping to support individuals as they come in and being able to provide mental health assessments as they come into the system, thereby being able to kind of direct services early on. And the other two are community-based. One of them is to help staff a community vehicle. It's going to be a bus that we're going to be able to take services out into the community. We do have some brick and mortar services right now, but we want to be able to kind of meet people where they are, and so to help us to do that. And the other is a peer drop-in center where people who might not be ready to enter services at the moment are able to come and be amongst peers, people with lived experience with opioid use, substance use, mental health disorders, things of that nature, so that they are able to come in and connect with services there. But I have Toni here as well, who can provide a little bit more information.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be here today. I'm very excited about this opportunity to, to really reach people in our, in our community. So I want to start off with the mobile, I call it the Mobile Engagement and Medication Assistance Treatment Services. There are many people that will not come to our brick and mortar centers, we don't know why, and this, this opportunity will be a way to really outreach to the people that cannot get to our community. So we'll provide peer services, hand out harm reduction kits, and if they need medication, we'll provide medication. It's going to be a no run door approach. So that's what we want to do, we want to engage people, get them into services, get them off the street, and provide the services they need. The other thing is that we hope to have a peer drop-in center. Again, this is another way to get people engaged in services. Sometimes folks are just not ready to start treatment right away, but they're ready to talk to somebody with lived experience. And so with a peer drop-in center, we'll hope that this is an opportunity to get more people engaged in services. Again, another way to get people off of drugs, and drugs and alcohol, or even if they have a mental health issue, these are opportunities to get more people engaged in services and reduce overdoses. And those are some of the things, they are evidence-based, they're done across the country, and so we're very excited about this opportunity, that really expands services of people in need.
Well, do you have a place that you do this counseling, or do you go to the streets?
Well, the mobile van is, we're looking at two, we're looking at locations, we haven't decided on any location, but working with a consultant, they suggest one location in Newport News and possibly one location in Hampton. So we, we're trying to decide where are the appropriate location in each of the locality. So we haven't, we haven't got to that point just yet, but hopefully within the next 60 days, we will have a possible location for these services.
I hope you do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion at this time? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters, remain to city council, I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me, Dr. Eric McCaskill. And as a reminder, I know we have a lot of, of people to speak at the red light, that is when your, your time is up, thank you all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Distinguished mayor, council, city manager, and distinguished Washington. I'm putting my cap on. There's a concern, we know, in our city. Shots fired was a Daily Press article on June 2nd. Probably for me was... We're doing a great job overall, but we still have concerns about the 43% increase in homicides last year in our beloved Newport, good news, Virginia. We want to transform that. We want to transform that, and for many years, you all know, we've been in the trenches. We started out with CAP, Alpha Minger Network Institute, started out with CAP, children have been incarcerated, parents, there are 20,000 children on the peninsula who have a parent that's in the penal system, and those children are seven times likely to repeat that cycle. Then we discovered the Virtues Project. I'm former coordinator of gang prevention for the Boys and Girls Club 20 years ago, and we came back from training and we wanted to empower the city, city wasn't quite ready, there was denial, that it does take a village with virtues to save a child. Then we realized that there were children in high-risk communities, and so we created the Royal Virtues Posse, and I must say, Councilman Woodbury and Councilman Harris will probably remember, and Councilwoman Vick will remember when we brought the Royal Virtues Posse here, and those young people who were considered high-risk and unproductive citizens. And then we addressed the, the police concern with police and concern citizens together, and Chief Drew has, has supported us. I won't speak on my behalf, but I'm speaking on behalf of, of grassroots organizations that are of the African diaspora that are founded and run, and Hampton Roads Community Foundation that formed last year in offer closing the gap on funding. And I'm just going to read with time I left, time left with a gentleman who's speaking on my behalf. "To whom we make concern, Eric McCaskill's very enthusiastic spirit and redemption for youth. He has demonstrated zestful, most contagious charisma for rediscovering the value through virtues." And I'll just come right on down, it says, "Examine what he has done in the solitary income to date, and imagine what we could do with some real funds." Reverend Doc, the late Dr. Reverend, Marcellus Harris, Jr., an art supporter. Thank you.[1754.86]
Thank you, sir. Kenneth Parker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm representing Trinity Tabernacle Church, located on twenty-four fourteen Parrish Avenue. We're asking the council to give us a way on decommission the elevator. They wanted to contract it out, which is well over ten thousand dollars. And we propose to seal up the top and the bottom elevator from head to toe with three-quarter inch metal, weld it up, that never can be used again. Deconnect the power to the panel box, and also go to the engine room and take down half of the motor that controls the elevator, discard it, so it never could be used again. No one can ever have access to it, and never be used again, and we'll be safe. That's all we're asking for.
We can, we'll, we'll, we'll talk after, after the meeting, sir. We'll have someone from, is codes and compliance here, Mr. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Assistant City Manager Clayton will be having to talk to the gentleman.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sir, let me just, may, sir. Is the elevator working now?
It hasn't, we haven't used in a couple of years.
You have not, okay.
We had other renovations done and didn't have the money to do it. And then when we got a company to check it, they're talking about eighty thousand dollars to really do the elevator. So best to decommission it.
I see.
And we, we also agree, but that's very expensive. But if we can decommission it ourselves, where it's safe, nobody could ever use it again, and can't have access to it, then we shouldn't have to pay a contract, we can do it.
We'll connect you directly to our Assistant City Manager, and he'll take care of it, sir. After this meeting, right there. Don't raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Alan, Alan Feek? Mike, sorry about that.
How y'all doing?
Hi.
Good.
Oh, I don't know if you're the right people to talk to or not, but try to get four months of frustration into three minutes. I live at one three six Millstead in Maxwell Gardens, Newport News. And I checked with the three one one, my first phone call to them about a leak in the water main was May eighteenth. Obviously, we're into August now. They've come out there and marked it twice. I've called mosquito control three times, because there's a leak in the driveway and the road, the roads buckle. And every time I call Water Works, the first volume message, and I know they are, they're short-staffed, I understand that, but when you get into four months, five months, you're way past just being short-staffed. And I call, and nobody, all they'll tell me is, they're working on it, you're on the list. If you pay taxes every year and you pay them on time, we've never been late in forty-some years, you ought to at least be able to get an answer. Well, we might be out in three weeks, you've moved up on the list, but nobody will give you any answer. So it's just frustration. So maybe you all can somehow talk to Water Works and see if we can improve the system.
Even better, I think we have someone from Water Works right there, the director, who'll take care of it for you.
This is your good night. That's, that would be great.
So this, this, this was the right body to talk to, so you're good. We'll take care of it.
You're good.
Thanks, sir. Yep. Clayton Ty?
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
Hopefully, this is the right body for me, too.
Hopefully so.
Nine months ago, I stood before you and asked that the city pass a ceasefire resolution in regards to the ongoing conflict in Gaza. And I cited the volume of ordinance that had been dropped at the time. And I'm familiar with that, because I was a forward observer in the Army, which my entire job resolved, revolved around dropping ordinance. It was the equivalent of two of the bombs dropped on Hiroshima. Well, last week was the seventy-ninth anniversary of our bombing of Hiroshima. Now the equivalent of five atomic bombs have been dropped on Gaza in an area not that much larger than Newport News. Your response to me was that this is an international conflict and it doesn't directly affect Newport News. But since those comments were made, the Seventh Transportation Battalion out of, or Seventh Transportation Brigade out of Fort Eustis deployed to build a humanitarian pier in Gaza. And that lasted a whole two weeks plus before it was dismantled and the mission was declared over. And that was created solely to relieve the immense suffering that the conflict has enacted on people. So the residents of our city started something that they couldn't finish. It appears that no amount of weaponry, money, or aid is gonna solve this. I'm just asking you to kind of speak up to, you know, the people in our federal government to relay that this is now affecting us. This is affecting our residents. They're going over there and witnessing this with their hands tied behind their back and can't do anything to help people. And it's, it's a shame. So please, break the status quo, call for a ceasefire. You know, if you have an opportunity to make a motion to do that today, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Angela Harris? And then after Angela Harris, Amy Marshall?
It's really okay. This is the port of in-marcation and demarcation. West Avenue is where everything started in this new world we see now, which is America. So we do play a big role in the ceasefire. And we have played that big role since the beginning of time on Chestnut Avenue with the Green Foundation and the New Garden. Ms. Woodbury, you had me laughing all night. I think you're the only one woke on council, because there's a lot of stuff being pushed. There's a lot of stuff being pushed. I have a lot of questions and concerns, but I didn't come here for that. I came here because we are celebrating our thirty-third year of our Southeast Community Day Parade Festival. And so I'm here to ask all the families to come home. Come home and represent your family. Don't worry about what somebody think they get ready to do as they think they get ready to develop our waterfront as if we are not here, we still here. I'm Angela Harris, and I'm the granddaughter of Corporal Charles Henry Harris from World War II. We talk about our military story and we teach our children who they are. It's an honor and a pleasure to, to just listen to Woodbury. I thought she was asleep, but she woke, she more woke than all the young bucks on council, and I love it. Thank you. You've been here a great little while. So I send my love to Ms. McMillan. We did a lot of work, Woodbury. It is what it is, Tina, we got a lot of work to do. We don't have no blame game, Ms. Mabel, Washington, Jenkins, a lot of work to do, no blame game. Because we come from a legacy of strong women, strong women, women that raised the children. It's our responsibility to teach the children at home who they are before they leave out of the house. And then they won't get caught up in this and that and this and that. It is what it is, and it's gonna be what it's gonna be. I had the opportunity to be blessed with Linda Venable. If you don't know who Linda Venable is, that's B two mama. Her and my auntie, Aunt Dee Dee, they were best friends. We just found out that Aunt Dee Dee's real name is Bama Harris. Come on, y'all, them children thought their name was Lee for sixty years. It's a shame and a pity. Teach your children at home. I'm Angela Harris. Our cousin, Benny McGrady, built them towers on Sixth Street. So it's an honor and a pleasure to be in the presence of the dude. I remember when you came home, the Moken Community House, the only place to go. I remember when you were there. I remember. So let's not do no blame game and do no color codes. Like, come on, y'all, I am Buckingham. They left a hundred and thirty-five blacks off the census tract in Buckingham County, Virginia. I am Buckingham. And it is what it is. Teach your children, love on each other. And the Tulu reunion is coming, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth. Treat your children to the truth. You owe no one anything. John, we coming.
Thank you, ma'am. Amy Marshall? And then Benjamin Marshall?
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Marshall, and I am President for Turning Point USA's PAGE chapter. PAGE is our homeschool co-op, which is housed in a two-three-six-oh-one zip code. It stands for Peninsula Academy for Godly Education. So I'm here today along with some peers, just to discuss our gun rights as Newport News citizens. I wanted to bring out of the shadows the open carry ban that has been established since 2020. According to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-three, Subsection three, it is illegal in Newport News to openly carry, transport, or possess any firearm, ammunition for a firearm, or their components in specific locations. These locations are any building or portion thereof owned by the City of Newport News, or any authority or local governmental entity created or controlled by the City of Newport News. Any building or portion thereof that is being used for governmental purposes by the City of Newport News, or any authority or local governmental entity created or controlled by the City of Newport News. Three, any recreation or community center, facility, or public park owned or operated by the City of Newport News, or any authority or local governmental entity created or controlled by the City of Newport News. And four, any public street, road, alley, or sidewalk, or public right-of-way, or any other place of whatever nature that is open to the public and is being used for a city-sponsored event. So I'm here requesting that you look back on the law and reconsider the ban, because even though it is seemingly small, it is, it's still an infringement of our rights as citizens, because it's removing the individual's choice of whether or not they want to open carry. It's removing a decision from the citizen's hands, and it's placing the ownership into the hands of the government. This enactment has the potential to lead to stricter gun laws, as in going from concealed carry only in governmental buildings to not allowing our governmental employees to carry their guns, or concealed being restricted at community centers or public parks. These are things as citizens we must take into consideration. I know, Mayor Jones, you promised to end gun violence in Newport News, and you said that you would put the resources and dollars behind it, but don't let fear take hold of reason. Reason of where our money goes, reason of where you place your time and energy, and the reasoning of future possibilities. Open carry should be a decision left in the hands of the firearm owner and not regulated, regulation placed in the hands of our government, whether local or small, or local or large. So I speak for my group in saying that we are still grateful for the concealed carry laws that we have in place, but we're requesting that you reconsider the ban to allow citizens the freedom of decision. That's it.
Thank you. Benjamin Marshall?
Hello, I'm Benjamin Marshall, Assistant of Newport News. I'm with the Turning Point USA Group, or PAGE. And I'd like to bring to you the topic that was just brought up, gun rights and laws. I'm aware that you're constantly worrying about juggling people's pay and stuff and safety, but yeah. I've seen a pattern throughout history, which is similar to Paul's. Basically, you limit something, they say it's dangerous, and they eventually take it away. And in this situation, it's kind of distracting with the guns, but that's not your goal, I know that. But yeah. It's just.
Take your time, man.
Okay. Everyone gets a three minutes, you're good, you've got plenty of time.
But basically, it has to do with the safety of the people, but also the safety of the government, because in the future, you don't want people thinking highly of themselves and being greedy. So that's why we have the Second Amendment, to defend ourselves. And the more you take away from something, the easier it is to continue to take away from those things. Piece by piece, so yeah.
No, it was good. Thank you.
Also have pocket constitutions for the council members.
If you give it to the city clerk, she'll pass it to us after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Benjamin. Next up, we have Eric Jacob.
Good evening, Mayor Jones.
Good evening.
Council members, guests. My name is Eric Jacob. I'm a member of the PAGE Turning Point chapter. The reason I'm here today is to address the open carry ban found in the Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-three, Subsection three. My request is that you consider repealing the ban on openly carrying firearms. The intent of implementing this ordinance was to protect the citizens of Newport News from gun violence, but I don't believe that result was quite as effective as it could have been. Law-abiding citizens continue to abide by the rules and regulations while those who do not plan to commit a crime, while those who plan to commit a crime do not have any qualms about adding their transgressions in illegally acquiring a weapon. In order to make Newport News safer, I would suggest administering a program to teach kids and adults basic gun safety in schools. I am aware that the Virginia Department of Education even created a whole program for teaching kids about gun safety and what to do if they find a gun just lying around. It's to go find an adult and leave the room. I believe that would help keep our streets safer and stuff. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Lily Robinson?
Hi, Mayor Jones.
Good to see you, ma'am.
Hi, City Council. I really appreciate y'all having this meeting over here today in my territory. I've been dealing with y'all almost two years. I came here, Mayor Jones, first about our parade, and you were so kindly to get a reinstated. Mayor Jones, when I called you on December the eighteenth, you came to my apartment at the Lippin Rise like the gentleman that you are. You looked over this building that I'm having trouble with. When I moved in the Lippin Rise, I was one of the happiest person in the world. But that building is not a part of the what it's been. I have suffered in that building. I just got out the hospital and dealing with it. I got my granddaughter here, my granddaughter back there. I got the neighbor that lives in the building with me, know what I'm going through. I got my family and friends over there, and I asked them to let, for to come, Millie and Kelly and Pam. I asked them to come and back up with me, because I won't be able to come here anymore. I'm tired, I'm hurting, and I can't do this no more. They have sent me to the hospital. Now, I'm gonna tell you how I got here. My granddaughter, Anya Gallo, is behind me, and I have my niece, Apostle, she'll meet you. So that give us nine minutes, three minutes apiece. I'm gonna make my as fast.
I see you have the nine minutes, I will annotate that. Well done, well done.
Okay. First, man, y'all know what I've been through and stuff. I've been running up and down the hot sun and everything and stuff. My doctor has wrote plenty of letters and stuff. You have came over to that building. You have asked them to fix things that help, especially with the elevator. They haven't did anything. They give us a hard time, especially me, because I complained. I tried to get more people to come. We have to call the fire department constantly. We have an elevator there now that has not passed inspection. And housing has taken their people and told them, and they had vouchers, which my granddaughter will read it to y'all, that they can move there. They failed the inspection, it's still fair. I have fear and everything of it. On Saturday the sixth of July, my granddaughter took me to the grocery store. She normally do every month, she'll get up there in the elevator, get up on the second floor to a non-disabled apartment, to a non-disabled building. Monday, July the eighth, the elevator was not working. I couldn't even leave my house and stuff. My son came up there and said, the elevator's broke, you can't even go out the apartment. Okay, then they stay on the knife, I went to the insight program and stuff, because they probably helping me get out of there and everything and stuff, with my fear and everything. And so I left there and I came back and stuff. My doctor sent this letter, read the letter, Anya, that my doctor said, on July the ninth, tell them what's going on, my health is getting bad.
I've, I've got the timer, just, just cut the mic, I got the timer. You're good, you're good.
The letter says, "I am writing on behalf of my patient, Ms. Lily Robinson, to the following, to follow up on a housing request made on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. As her primary care physician, I am aware of Ms. Robinson's health conditions, which, which includes being, being wheelchair-bound and having mobility limitations. During our prior assessments, it was recommended that Ms. Robinson be located to a two-bedroom, first-floor apartment to better accommodate her mobility needs. I would like to highlight that Ms. Robinson's current living situation is severely impacting her overall health. She is experiencing increased anxiety and lower extremity pains due to the difficulties she faced in navigating long hallways and using elevators." she faced in navigating long hallways and using elevators to access her current unit. These factors combined with her limited mobility are causing her undue stress and with her health issues. Given her circumstances, it is medically necessary for Ms. Robinson to be located to an accessible first-floor unit. This is, this would significantly significantly reduce the physical strain she currently experiences and would likely result in an improvement in her mental well-being. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, her doctor Timothy Patrick Larkin.
And ever since July the twenty-sixth, when I moved in that building in twenty-twenty-three, my doctor had wrote a letter every month, every month they are telling them. And September of twenty-twenty-three, they showed me apartment that was available, but it had a problem with the smell. I haven't got the code compliance to come over there. They had it for me, two bedrooms on the first floor. She chose not to give it to me. She gave me no reason and stuff. And she showed it to two other people and somebody moved in there in November. I had you to come out there in December.
Question, question, ma'am. It's been a while. When I, when I went to visit you, was that, was that the one on the first floor?
Yes.
At the, like in the back?
That one oh-three, yes. That one I showed you. Yes, that's what they told me and the girl said, I'm gonna get you off the floor, Jo, and so you get in here. And we was happy about that. It never happened. Then when you came and stuff, the first of January, they put a note on my door that when they get a place available, only after you came, that they would give it to me. So I'm only, and I was so thankful, God knows, I'd have told everybody, my grandkids, everybody. I love you, Mayor Jones. But anyway, moving on and stuff. So this all happened to me. So come the eighth of July, this is my girlfriend, she done moved now because she had a voucher. This is what was put, she was giving to them. It wasn't given to me because HUD helped me pay my rent. You know, my social security and my pension and stuff. So I don't have a voucher and stuff. So I don't have nobody from HUD representing me. So anyway, here goes what Newport.
Ma'am, we got about, you got about one more minute, but how about this, how about this? Can I come on Thursday? I think I, I think I have time Thursday to come. Can I come on Thursday?
Can you send somebody from HUD?
Uh, I don't know, but just, I will.
I've been trying to get a conference Scott. He done been out church to get our vote, but wait I see him.
I will give you your cell phone. You can call him.
But I would not vote for him anymore.
I got you, I got you. So, so I will come on Thursday to your house. Tiffany will get your information and I'll be there on Thursday and then afterwards Owen and I will talk about the apartments, okay?
Okay.
Okay, we got it.
Let her say one minute because she came all the way from work and stuff, just.
I get, I get, you got a, you got a minute, ma'am. Is that okay?
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
I had the opportunity to assist Ms. Robinson to the General Assembly in January, on January the twenty-fourth, and that was in hopes of getting some resolve of her situation. In me going and visiting her, the apartments are not handicap accessible. The doors to the apartments are too heavy and she has limited mobility. Nothing is being really addressed. You all have been out to address the apartment complex, but no follow-up, nobody is really doing anything to, to push this complex to, to assist their residents and to keep up to codes. You know, I know she's probably in other meetings show where the garbage from December to January was left there and it's just a lot going on and these are new apartments that, you know, we have a community that we're trying to build up, but we also have to keep it up in order for it to remain that way.
I got you. Okay, thank you. We're, we're good. Thank you. All right, see you Thursday. I think that's all citizen comments that I have. Did anything get updated? Okay, so at this time, we're gonna go to, thank you Tiffany, we're gonna go to new business, Mr. Manager.
Everyone that our transportation partners, Amtrak and the Virginia Passenger and Rail Authority are diligently working with city staff to finalize the upcoming transportation project. And we're excited to announce that the opening day for the new Amtrak station is scheduled for next week, Thursday, August the twenty-second. This will be a soft opening and I'll talk to you a little bit more about it in just a sec. To commemorate this milestone, Amtrak will host a media event to welcome the first train to the new station at approximately eleven twenty-four AM on August the twenty-second. City staff will be on site to capture this historic moment and the tourism office will have a welcome team ready to greet passengers as they disembark. Communications Department is coordinating with our transportation partners for the ribbon-cutting ceremony which will be held on September the nineteenth. More details on the official grand opening celebration are to follow. So we look forward to celebrating this significant development and we appreciate your support as we continue to enhance our city's transportation infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Long?
I just wanna say, Alan, thanks for that good news that we're gonna finally open up the Amtrak station. Also, thank you for everyone that came out participating tonight. I would like to meet with you two as well, the gentleman from Maxwell Gardens is that, that residence in my district and also talk with you two as well, y'all, when you do talk to the gentleman. I want to congratulate this United Way's new CEO, Travella West. Look forward to her leadership, leading United Way. I knew Steve Castwell quite a while and Travella West participated with our conversational homeless is, she represented the United Way. So I believe she'll do an excellent job in that new leadership role. Also, I look forward to the Saturday coming up, the second Made in America and the Celebration of All American City. So it's gonna be a great weekend. Looking forward to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vic?
Yes, I want to, I'm, I'm hoping that we will be able to, for the pastor, are you the pastor at Trinity Tabernacle Church? I'm really hoping that we will be able to get some resolve because of that situation because I know that, you know, there are standard procedures for some things, you know, state requirements or federal requirements or whatever, but it can be very costly to small businesses and small churches. So I'm hoping that you're working codes, we will be able to get a resolve that's less expensive and you, you'll be able to take care of that and continue with the church. Also wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your concerns are definitely, definitely heard. And also Saturday, like Councilman Long said, will be very busy. I packed up my event flyer, but I do want to take it out. Even though we are having the All American City Celebration on the seventeenth, we also, my Women's Empowerment Development, we are having and presenting the second annual Fit, Fair and Finance Wellness Expo and we'll be at King Lincoln Park downtown on the beautiful water and on the stage from eight AM to four PM. So if you're, we're starting at eight AM with Zumba. We're trying to get people to move and we'll have mental health specialists there. The Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, a host of refreshments, free prizes, so many free money prizes. So come on out, have a good time and enjoy and, and get, and experience wellness in our city. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury, I skipped you last time, so you can double your time.
Oh, thank you very much. But I will just thank all these people for coming out and for speaking up and letting us know what's going on in our city because we don't know everything and we just can get to so many. But we appreciate your coming and speaking and being involved in your city. It's very important. So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely?
I just want to thank everybody for coming here today. Your voices are definitely heard and as a council and a city, we definitely do what we can to make sure we, do what we can to make sure you're happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Oh, yes, and good evening to everyone and same, just echo everybody's comments. We thank everybody for being here on tonight. Have a couple of things. I wanted to ask this question publicly. When will the community grant support funding applications? Are they open now for residents or when does that?
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilman Harris, thank you for asking. As council has indicated, they're very interested in changing up the community support agency grant application. We alerted city council during the FY twenty-five budget process that we would be integrating the Gun Violence Intervention Program with our community support. We are looking at doing wider public engagement as well as how to make the grant application more accessible for new agencies, including having grant training sessions, so to speak. So we're working on that during this summer kind of recess for the Budget Department. We're looking at expanding the application process. Normally it starts in October and the submission needs to be done by January. We're looking at broadening that to probably earlier. So there's a lot of things in progress that the city manager needs to formalize and agree to and then we'll be ready to bring it back to city council. So we, we've heard city council and we're working to do a broader outreach and education process.
Thank you. I just wanted to let that be on record so people can also get an understanding of the timeframes and what's also the new processes, I can't really say new, but adjusted processes to make sure that people in our community are accessible for them to get their grant applications and to be able to submit those applications. In addition to that, I want to thank everybody who was a part of the Friday Night Nets program over the course of the summer. It has been a phenomenal activity for those kids that have been out there and young adults, I should say, being able to be out at the courts on Friday evenings and playing ball and getting haircuts and getting in the gaming truck. I definitely saw the impact firsthand on how it had on the community. I didn't get to make it down to achieve a dream as much, but at the community center in the North District, a lot of kids and adults in there enjoying a Friday night and hopefully see how that moves forward in the future and how we can continue to enhance it. And even looking forward to what's gonna happen in the fall and winter months as we continue to kind of brainstorm on how we could build off of the momentum of that program. So thank you. I know so. Mr. Freeman out there several Friday nights and to all the staff, they were out there from, I think they started sitting up from four o'clock every Friday and were there till after twelve o'clock. So we thank you all for that. And then just to kind of close, I think the next time we meet, it will probably be in like the fourth week of school for our students. So to everybody getting ready for the school year, I want to wish a very blessed and positive school year to all of our students and to all the staff members. I hope and pray that you will continue to, to remember the calling that you have to serve as a, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a custodian, whether it's a bus driver, administrator. We just wish all of our students and staff success for this school year and it's right around the corner. So we're getting ready for that. And there's several school drives. I don't want to start calling them off because I'm gonna miss somebody and then they'll be upset at me. So just check all of, if you're on social media, if you have anybody that's connected to some of the community events, there's several back-to-school events taking place, not just this weekend, but leading up into school year. Please go out, support, have fun as we get ready for another school year. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Two quick shout-outs I want to give to the Department of Planning. Right now, we have a community survey that is going on and we are updating our comprehensive plan. When I tell you I see the Assistant Director everywhere I go, he's out there with his, his setup, trying to get our residents engaged. So please, if you have a few minutes to spare, please fill out that survey because we definitely want to hear from you as we think about the future of our city. Next is, if you go online and you look at our CIP interactive map. So we have a Capital Improvement Plan interactive map in which Lisa, everyone who had a hand in that, it is phenomenal. For all the residents, if you get a chance, you get to see exactly all the projects that are already slated to happen and to come in the future. And so if you were curious about what's coming, I highly encourage you to visit this map and familiarize yourself with it. Amtrak, thank you so much to Craig and team and everyone else, Mr. Manager. This is going to be an awesome thing uptown, so I am grateful for it. Let's see, next thing is All American City. Please come out. I think the, the highlight of All American City will be the John Ely Drone Show. So if you all have some time, please, at nine PM, there will be the John Ely Drone Show and it will be phenomenal. And it's going to be a great time celebrating such an amazing accomplishment and becoming an All American City. And then the last thing that I have is in regards to the passing of Mr. John McMillan. Over the break, we had an opportunity to celebrate the life of a good man. He not only served his country, but he also served Newport News, serving as Chair of the School Board and in a number of different capacities on board. So I just want to send thoughts and prayers to Madeline and the entire family. And that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think all of my comments have been, been taken. Just wanted to give a special thank you again to Master Firefighter Jason Edwards for all of he did, his activities and what he did when he was off duty. It was all over the news. We want to thank you to him and to the entire, all of our first responders. And with that, hopefully I see everyone on Saturday, either for the CMU new student move-in or the All American City and the Drone Show. So with that, we're stand adjourned. Thank you.